Well, it's an honor to speak here today. Often people in the community talk to me about being on the Grand Rapids Public School Board, and they say, "How goes it? Isn't it difficult? Isn't it challenging?" And it is challenging. There's a lot of challenges with the funding cuts we face and also with the many high needs of children living in poverty, but there is so much to celebrate in addition to the amazing staff we have at Grand Rapids Public Schools, amazing educators and leaders evidenced by our teacher honored today. I always say this is an amazing community here in Grand Rapids. We have so many partners. There is so much goodwill, so much heart in the city of Grand Rapids for Grand Rapids Public Schools to succeed and for the students in Grand Rapids Public Schools to succeed. We are recognized nationally as the second most philanthropic community, and I am proud of that and pleased to be in a community that's part of that. Some more statistics here for you. There has been more than 4 million in private investment in GRPS from businesses and nonprofits and others in five years. And as our mayor spoke, we have a wonderful partnership with our city and our city leadership. We share resources, support advocacy parks and more. Our mayor's state-of-the-city address spoke specifically to the educational needs of children in our city. We have a unified dedication to our children. We just broke ground last week. It was a wonderful event out at our Blandford School. It's a 30-year program, and we have a new beautiful building serving the environmental school there, and it's funded entirely through community and philanthropic efforts. It's a unique endeavor, and we're very proud about it. I want to list some of our partners here, and this is not all-inclusive, but significant. We have the Grand Rapids Student Advancement Foundation. We have United Way, Schools of Hope, Believe to Become, Kent School Services Network, Grand Rapids Community Foundations, Challenge Schools, and Myers Good Schools. Major corporate sponsors Amway, Spectrum Health, Rockford Construction, Triangle, Crissman, Progressive A&amp;E, Life EMS, Ambulance Steelcase, et cetera. Major university partners, Grand Valley, Ferris State, Davenport, Michigan State, Michigan State Med School, Grand Rapids Community College, Kent County, the KISD, Kent County DHS, The First United Methodist Church, and so many more. And being on the board, I've gotten to know many of the people in these organizations, tremendous leaders with great heart, great care, and great vision for Grand Rapids. We are excited, too, that Roberto Rodriguez, Special Assistant to President on Education Policy, is back home with us today. He is a Grand Rapids Public School alum, City High. It's great to have him home. It is an honor that Grand Rapids Public Schools in the city of Grand Rapids was selected as one of the only few sites nationwide by the White House Office of Faith-Based Neighborhood Partners and the U.S. Department of Education for the Together for Tomorrow Town Hall meeting showcasing GRPS in Grand Rapids as a national model for faith-based community and nonprofit partnerships with our schools. Following me is a director from there, Reverend Brenda Gertner Mitchell. She's the Director for the Center for Faith-Based Neighborhood Partnerships for the U.S. Department of Education. Before Brenda comes up, I would like to also acknowledge some of the other people here today. I saw Ron Kahler from the KISD. Kevin Karnaska was here earlier. We also have my colleagues here, Maureen Slade and Jane Geetson. Reverend Kenneth Hoskins, is he still here? I would also like to express regrets from our new superintendent, who we are all thrilled about. She could not be here. She has a family emergency. Oh, Greg, I see you here. Our city manager, Greg, took out time of his busy day to be here. This is the partnership we have in this community. Reverend Gertner Mitchell, thank you.
It is really an honor and a pleasure to be with you here in Grand Rapids this afternoon, and it's already been a great day. We go to cities across the country, and when you walk into a place and you feel, I'll dare to say it, and you feel a special spirit, then you know that people are willing to work together to do the things that need to be done, to embrace our children and to lift our communities into new places because we're working together for shared goals. So today, we're coming to talk to you about Together for Tomorrow. And Together for Tomorrow is more than a catchy slogan. It's really just an easy way to help people see that if we all align our efforts, if we all decide together that improving the schools for the neediest schools, improving the environment in our educational system for the children who are most in need of that additional help, investing not only dollars, because we've got SIG dollars in this community, it's not always about money. More often than not, it's about energy and taking that energy and channeling it, focusing it on shared goals so that we can reach the objectives that we need in our classrooms. And so in Together for Tomorrow, as we've gone around the country, talking to people and listening and seeing what people were doing, that was working, we'd have people say, particularly in our faith-based and partnership organizations, "Well, we want to help. We recognize that we have problems in some of our schools and that if we had more capacity, even without more dollars, that we could have better results in the classroom, but we don't know how to help." In some communities, in our Grand Rapids, people have said, "We don't feel welcome in the schools anymore, or we're uncomfortable as faith-based and neighborhood groups going into the schools, so how can we help?" So Together for Tomorrow has created a platform, if you will, to answer the question, how you can help to improve our neediest, low-performing schools, what we choose to call priority schools now. And if we were looking at a medical model and we said, "This part of my body hurts," then we're going to work on making that part of our body that's not so good feel better, do better, function better. And so Together for Tomorrow says, "Take a look at what's going on in your community and the groups that want to help and are helping, and then align the efforts based on what the teachers and the principals have said these children need." And national studies say that if we invest in improving attendance, because if you're not there, you can't learn, behavior, if your behavior's out of whack, somebody's got to call your attention to it and help you get it right, course performance, maybe Johnny just needs a little extra help with science and math, and college access, if we work on those ABCs, which are not original to us, that we can see, we can drive improvement. We can come up with our own measures of where Johnny and Barbara started and where they're going to end up at the year, and we can then begin to even add more value to the analysis of whether having community groups work in schools at capacity really makes a difference. We know and believe that it does, so we want to focus the areas with this national campaign. And it does more than just take us through this June. It really gets us talking about education at another level all across the United States of America in what we think are healthy and inspiring ways. So we can be a catalyst for getting more people involved. We can celebrate good work that's already going on, and then we can leverage the work that's out there as we align those goals to the outcomes that we know we need for our children. So today, you're going to hear more about some of the impact of work that's already going on, and then find ways to become cheerleaders with us so that more people will sign up and work with us to improve education, doing it together for tomorrow. Now, in my other life, I am a minister. I'm Baptist preacher. And so I just want you all to help me for one second. Just help me for one second. Okay, work with me for one second. One second, and I just want you to repeat after me. And I'm going to put my hand up when I'm ready for you to say it. And the only words you need to say are Together for Tomorrow. So here in Grand Rapids, we are ready to do it. All right, all right. So we are ready to roll, and we're going to now be prepared to have Paula Kaiser Van Dam, who is the Executive Director of the Michigan Community Service Commission, come to lead us in the next part of our program. Paula?
Thank you, Reverend Gertner Mitchell. As she said, I serve as the Executive Director of the Michigan Community Service Commission, and we are a state agency that was created 20 years ago to really expand and promote service and volunteerum across the state, and we administer some of the national service dollars in the state, including AmeriCorps dollars. And since the inception of the commission 20 years ago, we have been using service as a strategy to address some of Michigan's most pressing problems. And over the past 20 years, we've invested over $100 million in communities for volunteer initiatives. Annually in Michigan, more than 42,000 individuals commit their lives to national service through AmeriCorps, SeniorCorps, Volunteer Generation, and Learn and Serve. Each in their unique ways, members of the national service family devote countless hours to results-driven service, which helps meet local needs, strengthen communities, and increase civic engagement. We know national service, and particularly AmeriCorps, is an important strategy in addressing our state's educational challenges. In 10 of Detroit's most problematic schools, a team of City Year Detroit AmeriCorps members spend every day amongst the city's middle and high school-age students. For one entire year, these AmeriCorps members work with both teachers and administrators to support students who show early warning signs of dropping out. By implementing a series of research-based intervention strategies, which include literacy and math tutoring, whole-class academic support, attendance and behavior coaching, and enrichment programming, City Year Detroit AmeriCorps members are strengthening student achievement and engagement in Detroit. Another example of how national service is impacting education is through the state of Michigan's workforce development agency, Gear Up AmeriCorps Vista Project. Fifteen vistas serve at college campuses statewide to help academically and economically disadvantaged students develop the necessary skills and capabilities to achieve college success. They distribute more than 100,000 college brochures and college financial aid packets annually to inform families of available resources to make college financially achievable. Every February, more than 200 volunteers are recruited, trained, and coordinated to help families complete their financial aid applications, which we know is a big predictor for getting kids in college. And right here in Grand Rapids, we have an AmeriCorps program working to address literacy issues in the Grand Rapids Public Schools. The Heart of West Michigan United Way Schools of Hope Program, headed up by Tony Campbell, Fritz Krab, and others, are utilizing 15 full-time AmeriCorps members in a three-tiered program in 15 different elementary schools, and they're addressing family literacy as well as in-school and after-school tutoring. And I know Tony's on the panel later, so I don't want to steal his thunder, so I'm sure he'll be willing to reveal all of the great data associated with that program. But know that there has been national service resources right here in your community working hand-in-hand with your school to help you achieve the educational goals you have for your children. We also know that to make national service work, it takes community partnerships. It's not the government alone working with schools to do that. It's organizations like the United Way and the Literacy Center here in Grand Rapids who are partnering to make this happen, which is critically important. Citizen service and capacity building are key missions to our AmeriCorps and other programs, so it's natural for us to engage these resources in partnership with the U.S. Department of Education for the new Together for Tomorrow initiative. Currently, in six Together for Tomorrow demonstration sites, Vista members are serving in low-performing schools as full-time school-community partnership coordinators. They are coordinating closely with principals to build partnerships and establish service initiatives that respond to school needs in the ABCs that Reverend Gertner Mitchell talked about. Now, it's my honor and pleasure to welcome Grand Rapids native and Special Assistant to the President for Education Policy with the White House Domestic Policy Council, Roberto Rodriguez.
Thanks very much, Paula. Good afternoon. I am thrilled to be back here in Grand Rapids and in West Michigan, and on behalf of the White House and of President Barack Obama, I want to bring you greetings. Thank you all so much for coming out for this important discussion on really how to reshape our education system to deliver on this promise of college and career readiness for all of our students. Before we get started today, I just want to acknowledge again and thank a few leaders here in the crowd. I want to begin by thanking Mayor Hartwell. We're proud of your leadership in Grand Rapids and of your tradition and commitment to really making sure that all of Grand Rapids citizens are heard. We want to thank Reverend Brenda Gertner Mitchell, who's the Director of our Center for Faith-Based Neighborhood Partnerships at the White House and at the Department of Education. It's really Brenda's leadership and that of her team that has developed Together for Tomorrow and really brought it forward. I want to thank Principal Lewis for welcoming us into his building, and I want to acknowledge Bobby Joe Kenyon on her outstanding example of great teaching. It's something that's inspiring to all of us here in Grand Rapids as well as nationally. And I'm really so happy to have this conversation today and to really put education front and center in terms of a national conversation about how to move our economy forward. You know, the president believes we need to do much more than just recover from the recession. We need to really create an economy that's built to last, and we need an American economy that restores economic security for the middle class, where hard work and responsibility is rewarded, and where everyone who wants to find a good job can find one. Building that economy requires knowledge and skills. Those are kind of the central commodities to that new vision. And to build this new economy, we know we need to provide every child with an education that will enable them to succeed in this new global marketplace that's really built on knowledge and innovation. And so that's why shortly after taking office, President Obama set the goal of having the highest proportion of college graduates in the world by 2020. That's why the president committed early in our administration to ensure that every child has access to a complete and competitive education, truly from the day they're born until the day that they begin a career. And fulfilling that promise requires that we commit ourselves to higher standards and higher expectations for our entire education system and for all who participate in that system, for parents, for students, for our principals, for our teachers, for our decision-makers, and our policy leaders, and our schools. We must undertake efforts to make sure that we're keeping America's teachers in the classrooms where they're needed the most, and that we're making reforms to boost teacher effectiveness and support them in the teaching profession. We need to take on this ambitious work of closing the achievement gap and turning around performance in some of our struggling schools. Brenda puts it great when she says these are our priority schools, where we need to be sure that we're delivering on this promise for college and career readiness for all of our students, and that's in part why we're here today. And we need to also be sure that at the same time that we're forging ahead on that challenge, we're providing our school districts and our states the flexibility that they need to really develop new and innovative practices that will drive better outcomes, will prepare all of their students to meet high standards. So this plan that we face to really strengthen our education system, it acknowledges the strengths that we have as Americans and that we have as communities, that Grand Rapids has as a community. We're going to hear about how this community has come together around this challenge, and this is the grand contest that we face in terms of delivering on college and career readiness for all students. It's not a contest between Democrats and Republicans. It's not a contest that's imbued in politics in Washington. This is about a contest to really win the future and make sure that we provide all of our children the opportunity to succeed in the global marketplace, and we need to win this contest, not just for the individual future of each and every one of our kids, but for our collective future as an American community. So our administration is making strides here. We're taking this work on head-on. We've begun a reform of our education system through the race to the top, and we're developing higher standards and encouraging states to take on better assessments, adopt better data systems to provide information to principals. There's the bell. To provide better information to principals and teachers and make sure that they have all the tools they need to be effective. We're raising standards and giving states more flexibility from No Child Left Behind. And again, No Child Left Behind had some good attributes around focusing on the achievement gap, on accountability for all students, but we know that there were unintended consequences in terms of narrowing the curriculum, lack of flexibility, and an accountability system that wasn't right-sized for college and career readiness, and too much of a focus on a one-size-fits-all approach. So we're trying to do more to empower states through a new federal-state partnership to keep a high bar around accountability, teaching, and learning, and get the flexibility they need from that law. And we've already granted flexibility to a number of states, and I know Michigan is one of those states that has their application in for greater flexibility under No Child Left Behind. We're trying to do more to develop and validate new ideas around teaching and learning through the Investing in Innovation Fund, and to empower our local schools and nonprofit partners to develop new models and strategies around teaching practice. And most importantly, why we're here today, we're trying to do more to really assist in an all-hands-on-deck effort to improve some of our priority schools through this School Improvement Grant Program. So since 2009, we have awarded over $4 billion nationally, including investing over $24 million here in Grand Rapids Public Schools to really spur change and improvement in these schools, in our priority schools. And we have more than 1,300 schools around the country that are undertaking this work. They're undertaking new options for dramatic change and to improve outcomes for students. What we know so far, and this has been alluded to already, this program, the School Improvement Grant Program, has been a catalyst. It's been an accelerator for change in hundreds of our lowest-performing high schools and middle schools across the country. And we don't have the official data available just yet. We're still waiting on that, but we have some preliminary results that are encouraging. And you know, this is hard work. Imbuing change in our schools is not an easy task, and often it doesn't reap rewards even after the first year of work, but we are encouraged, just as we're starting to see results and progress here at Ottawa Hills, encouraging results. We're seeing across the country roughly 1 in 4 schools that are seeing double-digit gains in math proficiency, about 1 in 5 schools that are seeing double-digit gains in reading proficiency. Now, again, these are preliminary numbers, but we're excited about the promise that this reform holds for our communities and for making sure that each and every one of our young people has a shot at college and career readiness. We're also gathering data beyond test data because we know that that alone is not enough of a metric and a measure of performance for our schools, so we're looking at changes in graduation rates, in dropout rates, in attendance, in discipline, and other indicators. And we know that while we're not where we need to be in each of these schools, the progress and the sense of momentum is real, and I am encouraged and excited because I feel that it's palpable. I feel that progress and that momentum here today. So we know that implementing these dramatic changes almost without fail takes two strong things. First, it takes a dynamic, strong principle with a clear vision, and we're going to hear a little bit about perspective from our principal on our panel here in just a moment. We also know, second, it takes a relentless focus on improving teaching and learning and providing better professional development and support to our teachers and educators, to the teaching staff, using data and encouraging teacher collaboration in real and meaningful ways. So at the end of the day, it's really the focus, the passion, and the commitment of those that are in the school that drives this success. It's also about the commitment that our partners around the school bring to this work. It's about skilled teachers, principals, and school staff working with committed and invested parents to really turn these schools into models of educational excellence. It's about sharing responsibility for the future of our kids. It's about encouraging commitments and partners, particularly from business, from our faith partners and our neighborhood leaders, our community leaders, our philanthropic leaders, all rallying around these schools and their students and their families, and creating this community of learning and of excellence. And make no mistake, at the heart of that community is this goal to prepare every child with the knowledge to graduate prepared for college and careers. So our teachers and principals are making heroic efforts around the country. We're here today to celebrate some of those efforts in Grand Rapids. We know that this needs to be about boosting our neediest communities and our neediest schools and placing a high priority on those schools. It has to be about strengthening the capacity to work together. That's what Together for Tomorrow is all about, is really exploring what's needed to build strong and lasting partnerships between our schools and their neighborhood and community partners. And finally, Together for Tomorrow is about making sure that we're moving the needle on key measurable outcomes. You heard some of these outcomes. Brenda mentioned them. They're our ABCs. They're about attendance, behavior, course performance, and college access. And it's also, I'm going to add a D and an E in there, it's about determination and engagement on the part of our students. Not surprisingly, all of this really requires a community culture where improvement is viewed as everyone's responsibility, and this is why we're here today and why we're looking to West Michigan and to Grand Rapids to learn more about how these partnerships have really built this community culture around helping students succeed. There are just a few examples here. Some of these have already been mentioned, but the Heart of West Michigan's United Way School of Hope Program, this example of providing targeted tutoring and after-school programming in partnership with nonprofits and with our faith community. It's the Kent School Services Network, partnering with the Kent County Department of Human Services, with Blodgett, with Ken Intermediate, with other nonprofits to make sure that our students get the health, mental health, social, emotional services that they need to be able to learn and succeed. It's about Believe to Become, which is an example targeting 4 of the high-need, high-poverty neighborhoods, going block by block, student by student, to really tackle these in-school and out-of-school issues that are facing our families and our students. So we're going to hear now a little bit about some of the folks here that are at the center of successful school-community partnerships here in Grand Rapids, Michigan. They're going to discuss their perspectives on the impact of community involvement on improving our schools. So I'd like to call up our panelists. Let me begin by introducing Tricia Mathis, who's principal of Martin Luther King Jr. Leadership Academy. Where's Tricia? Great. Come on up. And Jerhan Hawkins, who's our MLK Volunteer Coordinator at First United Methodist Church. And finally, Mr. Tony Campbell, who's Vice President for Focused Impact at Heart of West Michigan United Way. Thank you, Tony. So thank you to all three of you for joining. I am going to take the prerogative of kicking us off with some questions. There's going to be an opportunity here in our program to also hear from those of you in the audience. We want to hear your comments and your questions for the panel, too, but we're going to go ahead and get started.
If I could, Roberto.
Sure. No problem.
Then we have a special guest standing there in the back that we'd like to introduce. For all of you here, Bobby Joe Kenyon is the Michigan Teacher of the Year from Ottawa Hills. We're going to need to pass these back and forth, okay? Thank you, Bobby Joe, for joining us for this. Your teaching is really an inspiration to us here in Grand Rapids and to us nationally. So congratulations on your recognition today. So let's begin and begin to kind of get at the heart of these community-school partnerships. I'd like to begin with Ms. Mathis. Can you tell us a little bit about your school improvement efforts at MLK Leadership Academy and how the goals of Together for Tomorrow... and how the goals of Together for Tomorrow really match up with that?
Yep. Is it on? Can you hear me? All right. Or I can use my loud principal voice if you want. Our, MLK has made gains, we have made gains with our student achievement and with our behavior and with our attendance. However, we know that we cannot make those gains alone. We have some of the neediest students within Grand Rapids Public Schools and within this area, within the community. And so, it is incredibly important that the community come in and help us to continue to go forward, because we're not an island, we can't do everything alone. And so, in order to service all of their needs and meet all of their needs, in order to increase the student achievement, increase their attendance, you know, reduce behavior situation, and have college and career readiness for college access, we need all of the community partners to really help out with that. We have, with the Together for Tomorrow initiative, they spoke about attendance, they spoke about the behavior, the college access, and additionally, the achievement, the course area. And, we have multiple community partners within MLK. We are a KSSN school, so we have a site-team clinician, we have DHS workers to service family members. We additionally have a site coordinator for counseling. We also are a Schools of Hope after-school program. We also have a wonderful partnership with a faith-based community member through First United Methodist Church. And we have seen a lot of gains within our students' achievement and also all of the other pieces of the initiative, because Jer and I work really well together, but she has really come in and said, "How can we help the school? How can we help increase student achievement? How can we help the students, you know, reach their goals? And how can we make a positive impact on them?" So, she has come forward from First United Methodist and really tied a lot of that together. They work with us on attendance, they help come up with business partners that actually give us money for rewards for attendance and merit assemblies. They also come up with partners that will give us money so we can take students to colleges, so they can see the college. Additionally, we have over 150 different volunteers that come through our building every week for tutoring of every kinder, first, and second-grade student gets a half an hour with their very own tutor. And so, they're helping with the student achievement there as well. And so, it's incredibly important that the community works with the school where the children are the most neediest, to help bring them, so there's not a gap, so there's not a discrepancy among the children of Grand Rapids.
That's true. It's a great thumbnail, and I think in your comments, you really hear how all of these resources are being leveraged for the success of your students. Jer, you and I were talking just before the program a little bit about some of the tutoring and one-on-one work that you and your team do with the kids, K through 2, right?
Correct.
Tell us a little bit about how you're connecting your community resources, and how you're really envisioning contributing to this goal of attendance, behavior, course of college access. How are we, how is your contribution really helping move the needle on outcomes for those children?
Well, we work very hard to connect, first of all, with the staff at the school. We work in conjunction with them. We don't have our own motives, or even though we're a religious institution, we're not trying to preach a message there, but show our love to the children and the community. And so, I work closely with Tricia and the other support systems that we have, and I think that that's great. We're not in competition with one another, we're all working toward the common goal. So, there requires a great deal of organization, a plan, and flexibility. It seems that every day, we never quite know what's going to happen each day, and so we flow with it, and we look at the needs of the children. So, in my capacity, I work, I do grant writing, I work with community partners and pull them in, and strive to support everything that Tricia and her staff are doing with the attendance. We have Student of the Month honors that the children receive. We take them to museums, we take their entire family out for lunch as well, because we want the children to feel an achievement and to share it with their families. We have parenting programs that we offer, because we feel that the parents need to buy into their children's education. And a lot of our parents aren't comfortable in the schools initially because of past experiences that they've had and lack of success that they've had. So, we really encourage that. We're not an entitlement program, the parents volunteer and earn, we do a huge Christmas Giving Program, and the parents do volunteer work to earn their gifts. And, we get donors who take the wish lists and purchase the items for the children. So, there's a lot of affirmation that work results in some benefits for you. And so, we're encouraging that, and part of that piece is that the parents must come to open house, they must come to conferences to even qualify for that type of a program. So, it's very all-inclusive, and we work together to strive to push the fact that education is your ticket, and we're there to support them all the way.
Reinforcing that message, that important message. So, and then, you know, tell us a little bit about how the United Way comes in here, Tony, and how does school improvement, this notion of community partnerships, how does that fit with your mission at the heart of West Michigan United Way?
Oh, can you hear me? Boy, I don't want to use the Baptist preacher's voice, but I can. Roberto, first, I want to thank you for choosing Grand Rapids, and I want to thank you for coming. It's really an honor for our community, so thank you very, very much. And, besides being the, at the United Way, this past weekend, I just accepted the pastorship at Friendship Baptist Church, so I'm pastoring, I was a part-time pastor, now I'm pastoring a church now. So, I, yeah, thank you. So, the first thing I wanted to do was I wanted to ask the Reverend George Hartwell to pray for me, because I think I may be way over my head, but I've been known to do insane things before. But, what we did is, we really looked at the community, and we've got great community partnerships. KSSN is really looking at chronic absenteeism, how to address that. The Community Foundation is working very hard in the area of academics. The Student Advancement Foundation is filling in so many gaps that Grand Rapids Public Schools needs in terms of funding. And we began to look at congregations and what can the faith community do. And so, partnering really with the B2B Initiative and through the extreme generosity of the Doug and Maria DeVos Foundation, we began to look at our faith-based communities. And, with our faith-based communities, we found that in those neighborhoods, they provided stability, security, and hope. I remember going by a church one afternoon, and there were about 57 young people that were in a faith-based after-school program. And I remember talking to the director of that program, and she said that they really wanted to just do more. They wanted to do more, they were providing a safe place, but they wanted to do more. And so, we thought about the Schools of Hope Initiative, and where we functioned in that is we really functioned as an intermediary organization. We invest very little dollars in these faith-based organizations, but Renee Borg and Lori Owens are a team that really do our training and capacity building. We do heavy investment in terms of capacity building in those congregations. So, we provide 12 hours of initial training, two hours of training each month, and one hour of onsite observation. And with those, with that heavy investment of training, we find churches are able to then really do and make a difference. So, we work with children that normally gain four months in a year, because these children are two to three years behind. But our faith-based organizations, on average for the last four years, children that normally gained four months have gained a year and three months. That is significant growth. Amen? Yeah. So, and that's really due to Renee and Lori's work. And we just did our mid-year tests, and we found that our kids at mid-year had already gained seven months. In four months, they'd gained seven months worth of growth this year, and we'll have this end-of-year data coming up later. But we also recruit heavily from congregations to do our in-school tutoring program. So, we have about 1,000 tutors that go into Grand Rapids Public Schools. A lot of our tutors of color come out of those faith-based institutions. And again, Misty Stanton provides training for our in-school tutors, working with those tutors, building up their capacity so that they can make a difference with students. And about 58% of our, 58% of the students that we work with score higher than the contemporaries that were not in the program. And we also do family literacy, working and partnering with the Literacy Center and our families. About 83% of our families gain three or more points on a CASAS test in a year, that's significant growth. 76% of our families report greater attendance and greater participation in the life with their, with their students. And so, our goal has really been, how can we not only educate children, but we really want to educate the neighborhood? How can we build capacity in the neighborhood so that the neighborhood is able to support the good work that is already going on in Grand Rapids Public Schools? How can the neighborhood begin to educate their own children? And so, we've had those twin goals of working with our faith-based community. In the 1940s, in the African-American and the Latino community, there was more poverty, more discrimination, and more segregation in the 1940s than today. But in the 1940s, there were more high school graduates, more kids going to college in the 1940s than there were today. We think that that was because there was greater capacity to support education in the neighborhoods. And so, we're really trying to see how we can do that and build that kind of support within our neighborhoods. And lastly, I'll just close with this, that at the end of every program, at the end of every year, we have a closing, and at that closing, we allow parents to come up and talk. And I'll never forget, one year, this young man came up, and he talked about what the program meant to his son, and he said, "You know, when I grew up, my father was only cared about football, and so my father really didn't care if I learned how to read, so I didn't learn how to read. And so, all of my life, I've been terrified. I was terrified every time I had to take a test. I was terrified when I had to go get a driver's license. I'm still terrified now, every time that I have to go out and I have to drive somewhere where I don't know where I'm going, because I can't read the signs." But the most terrifying time in my life was the first time that my son came home and asked me, "Dad, would you help me with my homework?" And I knew that I couldn't help my son, and I was afraid that my son was going to end up just like me. But for the first time in our life, our family is not afraid, because our child is reading at grade level, and I'm not afraid that my son is going to have to face all the things that I have to face in life. When we really engage with our faith-based communities and work with our faith-based communities and invest in them and build up their capacity, we can help children move from the dark shores of despair over to the promised land of hope. We can make, yeah, I'm going to be a little Baptist preacher in that here, yeah. We can help, we can help children move from the dark shores of illiteracy over to the shores of literacy. We can help families move from this place of hope to a place of promise and a place of reality, where all children in all neighborhoods can support their children and teach children how to read, how to succeed, and how to make it in this life. Thank you very much.
Tony, before you take that new role, we may need you on the road with us for Together for Tomorrow. That was a fantastic vision, thank you very much. Let me just ask one more question here, and then we want to get some perspectives here from others here in the room. This, Tricia and Jer, could you speak to this a little bit, partnerships? Now, part of Together for Tomorrow is about building the capacity of schools and communities to work together, and it's not an easy thing. Folks in the room here have been in education for many years, know there are a lot of partnerships that come and go, and it's about, you know, interdependence and a real relationship. What makes for a good partnership to really help our students succeed? What's the anatomy of that?
I think you've hit the nail on the head, that the crux of the problem is, groups will come in, they have great enthusiasm for a program, but maybe not the know-how. Certainly, what is, and then they flop, and then schools, I think, are hesitant to engage with another school, another group coming in, because, "Oh, well, we had that previous experience." And so, I feel, our church has had a partnership now at First Henry School, that was torn down, now Martin Luther King School, for 20 years. This is our 20th year there, serving that school. It started small. Thank you, yeah, we're very proud. It started small and manageable, with five people coming and pulling chairs out into the hallway and reading with children. And then, the program has blossomed and grown into a huge, huge program, where we provide clothing for the children, cultural arts, field trips for all the grade levels, supplementary funds for the teachers, incentive money. We've helped parents expunge their criminal records, it's, we've just gone into a lot of different areas with this program. So, you need to have one or two people with a passion to make it happen, great communication, a receptive building, principal and staff, I would say, certainly financial support. But what I've found, I was scared to death when I took my job as church and school coordinator, because I was new to the community, and I said, "I don't know anybody." And I was told, "Don't worry about it, it's going to happen because of what you're doing. What you're doing is right." And I have to say that the support continues to come. People love to join forces with us, and it's because we've excelled, we have a lot of attention to detail, we make sure that we follow through on what we say we're going to do, and it becomes easier and easier, I think, as the days go by. But you have to have a great relationship between the folks that are, that are leading the charge, and I'm very fortunate to have a wonderful principal that I work with, who answers my texts in the middle of the night.
Everything she said, also. But, knowing that you have the same vision, knowing that they're not there to make you look bad, or they're not there to take away or detract from you, they're actually there to enhance, and you have the same vision about student success and making this building, I know this for our building, but making this building a showplace where other people from other districts come and say, "Wow, look at all of the stuff you've got going on and how well it works together." I mean, knowing that we have the same, I think having the same vision really makes a great partnership. And having trust, you have to build trust. It takes a little time, but when you build that trust, it definitely makes for a good partnership as well, so.
If I could add one thing, start manageable. Start with one aspect of helping support education that you can do well, and do it well, and then add bits and pieces as you go. I think sometimes we leap in and have all kinds of great ideas, but we need to start with something we can be successful with.